Good evening and thank you for coming. I'm Amy Harrington. I'm the mayor of Sonoma. And I want to introduce my colleagues who are here and ask them to come forward. Logan Harvey, the vice mayor, and Madeline Agramani, if you want to come on up. So, first matter, this is a notice city council meeting tonight. We aren't going to be speaking, but we are listening. And the purpose of this meeting is not only to inform the community, but to also give us the opportunity to hear your thoughts and learn along with you as part of developing a plan for a housing action plan for the town of Sonoma. So, we're delighted to be here with you tonight. And I don't think -- we don't need a roll call or anything, so no. All right. And so, just by way of background, the city council at the beginning of this year talked about some of our goals, and one of them was to have an actionable housing plan. And we made a subcommittee that is comprised of Rachel Hundley, who is in Washington, DC, and Logan Harvey. And they are working diligently on our behalf to put together the town halls that happened on April 25th and also tonight, and there'll be one more, and to help us put together that action plan. Councilmember David Cook unfortunately can't make it tonight because he is sick. So, some of you attended the first housing meeting on the 25th, which was entitled Learn Housing 101. Kind of set the baseline for terminology and what we're doing in town and the purposes of this series of town hall meetings. After that meeting, we gave you a survey. A number of people filled that out and gave it back to us for feedback. There will be a survey tonight as well, and we appreciate receiving your feedback about this meeting. Let's see. Also, it cannot be -- we can't go forward without noticing the staff, who has put a tremendous amount of work into this tonight. Can we give them a round of applause? And you're going to hear more when the panel -- about tonight after we sit down, but there's going to be a panel of experts tonight who will be introduced to you. And I'm so delighted about who we have tonight. There are people with deep experience building housing, hands-on, you know, real information about what we need to do for our town to make sure that we have the housing action plan that we want. So, I'm very excited about that. Each of you has a card for questions. If you have questions of the panel, there will be a Q&amp;A time, so you can turn in your questions then. We won't get to all the questions probably tonight, but we will respond to all of them on the city's website. So, now you know you have your questions, and that's about it for us. And thank you so much for being here, and we look forward to learning with you.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Caprilla, and I am lucky to be your city manager. So, just a few logistic things before I turn it over to Jim Heidark, consultant. A few other thank yous. I want to thank Whole Foods and Chamber of Commerce for helping do the food. And then, I did want to introduce a few of our staff that you've met maybe before and have them briefly stand up. David Stor is our new planning community services director. In the back is Wendy Atkins, our associate planner. And Sarah Tracy, I want to give a big call out, is in the back. And Sarah has been doing all the public information, so trying to obviously got to you. So, thanks for coming out. This meeting is being recorded. It'll be on the city's website, also on Channel 27. And I want to thank Bob Taylor and our partner with Sonoma Valley Community Communications for helping make this available. And then, I want to just turn it over to Jim. Hi, Jim, would you come up? Jim is the owner of Urban Green Advisors, and he is a sustainable development, both advisor and land planner and developer. He lives in Healdsburg, and he did this process with the city of Healdsburg about two years ago or so, a series of community meetings, and then helped them develop a housing action plan. And this was what our council thought was be really wanting to create a realistic roadmap forward for our town. So, thank you so much for being here, and I will turn it to Jim.
What can communities do to get more housing affordable and other into their communities? And as it says, a bit of a depending on which article you read, either at a crisis or an emergency, or just a big, a top headline issue for many people, it's something we really want to focus on, you know, pretty quickly. Ten-year plans are great, but we need some immediate action. And then, the next workshop will be a chance to really sit in round tables and work with your neighbors and your community to come up with some solutions and ideas. And that'll be a very interactive. Instead of you sitting and listening, you will be providing the content, a lot of discussion. And so, I hope you'll mark that date and plan to come and ask everybody to bring one other person with you so we can have a really full house. Why are we here? Sonoma, has anybody's read the general plan lately? Series of great principles, vision statements that talk about what a great place this is, but I think we all know what's at risk if we can't continue to house the people who work here and are part of the community, have been part of the fabric for a long time. What do we hope to accomplish? As we said, we want to get everybody to kind of a common level of understanding about housing. We want to talk about the implications of certain policy choices that are being made at any level. We want to talk about solutions that others are sharing, and we want to shift the focus from more action and less study. There's so many plans and studies and policy documents out there, and we're still sitting here with the same problem. We really, and this is the last one, is I think we've reached a point where we just need to be willing to experiment. One of my favorite phrases is, "Don't make the perfect be the enemy of the good." We've got to be willing to try some things, and we're going to learn some things along the way. We're not the only ones doing this. I wanted Caitlin to come up for a minute and just talk about your program the other night and maybe what you did, and if there's a couple of key takeaways you wanted to share with the audience, Sustainable Sonoma's Learning Lab.
Thanks, Jim. Hi, I'm Caitlin Cornwall. I'm the project director for Sustainable Sonoma. Sustainable Sonoma is a cross-sector leadership forum for Sonoma Valley, intending to tackle a lot of the big challenges that face the Sonoma Valley community over many years. Issues that are too big for any one organization or sector to tackle on their own. And just to start off with a bang, we've decided to start with housing. Easy, right? On Tuesday, we had a Learning Lab about housing, and we had a really broad panel of different interest groups in the valley representing their perspective on how the current housing situation is harming their sector. So, we had Mark from the Chamber of Commerce. We had a principal of a local school. We had someone from Sonoma Valley Fire and Rescue. We had Priscilla, the director from Vintage House. So, a variety of different perspectives talking about how housing, the housing situation has these various ripple effects that are harming our community. And we also had representation and comments there, both from Logan, from the city, and Susan Goran, our county supervisor. So, we're attempting to act as a bit of glue liaison between the city process and the county process. So, Sustainable Sonoma's goal around housing is to bring the different sectors of the Sonoma Valley community together to improve the housing situation. There hasn't been before a sort of united voice from business, from the environment, from social services and social justice, all talking about the need to change our housing trajectory. And we think that with that unusual cross-sector voice, action is possible that hasn't been possible before. I think that's all I need to say now, but if you're interested, please do sign up for our newsletter at sustainablesonoma.net. And we're also collecting signatures of individuals and organizations on a Sonoma Valley housing pledge. We think it's really important to demonstrate the breadth of support for a different housing future, especially to our elected officials, but also to other members of our community. So, talk to me if you want to know more. Thank you for the time, Jim.
Thank you. Thanks for -- thanks for your leadership. And I think one of the things that you'll hear tonight is there is no single solution. There's no single gateway or pathway to solution. It really is a very complicated issue that requires multiple solutions and multiple parties working together. And along those lines, just the other thing, the other things that are out of memory, that's the way I feel sometimes. Anyways, I showed this slide last time. This is all the different things that are happening at the state level relative to legislation. So, there's a lot of local organizations working on this. There's NGOs, there's cities, there's policies, but there's a lot of stuff happening at the state, all the way from funding to policy changes to zoning changes. So, just to let you know, this is a big issue for a lot of people and a very interesting graphic to kind of follow if -- okay. So, very quickly recap from last time that we were together. Not liking this setup. So, the main thing to take away, and we're going to talk a lot about tonight, is the difference between affordable design, affordable housing, little a, little h, and affordable housing, capital A, capital H. And the difference, little a, little h, is housing that is not controlled by some kind of policy, but is more attainable or more affordable to the marketplace because of, it may be functionally obsolete, it may be a lot of deferred maintenance, somebody may have had it in the family a long time, and they don't want to rent it at market, they're trying to help out other people. That is, it's a big part of the supply in a lot of communities, but it's always at risk because it may change hands and they may raise the pricing. Capital A, capital H, affordable housing is housing that is controlled by some series of policies, and many of our panelists can talk tonight about that. But just to make that distinction, because a lot of people lump affordable housing into one group, and there really are two very important groups in terms of how we get to building an overall portfolio or community stock of housing that is attainable to a variety of income groups. Affordable by design is another term that we introduced last week or talked about, and that is just housing that is more cost-effective because of both the way it's designed, so it may be smaller, it may be built more efficiently, and it is also more affordable by design because it may be less expensive to operate, may be closer to transit, so you don't have to have two cars. It may be more energy efficient, so your utility bill is smaller. So, all of those things, kind of two prongs, ongoing operations, initial cost of entry. A key thing when we talk about capital A, capital H housing, affordable housing that is controlled, it's all tied to AMI or area median income, and those are the, there's various levels that the state sets. As soon as the slide comes up, you'll see lurking in the background there, there's a table, there's different categories. We'll jump over that. Benjamin provided this slide tonight, and it's something that the county prepared, but it takes a lot of the gobbledygook that goes into AMI and affordability and all that kind of stuff, and starts to put it into things that we understand. But what does that mean in terms of income? How much can somebody make and what category does that put them in? So, you can see if you're a two-person household and you're in the low category, it's a $69,150 annual income. And you get a sense of what some of these positions are. So, there's a lot of positions in the county and in the city that are good career-building jobs, but also don't provide enough income to buy a market-rate house. And that's what we were talking a lot about, what's a median-priced house and where do the different income levels fall in this community? Okay. The other things that's been kind of a darling of the affordable housing or the housing supply issue of late is the accessory dwelling unit, or ADUs. It's been a lot of big legislation at the state level to make these more faster to build, less legislative and policy barriers for communities and for people to build them in their backyard. The thinking being that if you could build a small, used to be called a granny flat in your backyard, you could rent that out to somebody who's just getting started in their job. You could rent that to somebody who's maybe downsizing from their house and their bigger house then could be available to somebody else. So, it's a big part of the housing solution that's being looked at across the state. So, we talked, we asked on the survey, what did people want to hear about? And we gave you a couple of options, and the things that really came up at the top, and you can kind of see by the bar graph there, so protecting our existing stock. So, this is, this is the little a, little h housing. What are some of the tools? And this has really become part of the solution, I would say, of increased emphasis in the last three years because the cost to build new is so expensive, and some of our panelists will talk about that. But the ability to take stuff that's already affordable and somehow protect it from further price increases over time is a pretty valuable part of the solution a lot of communities are looking at. The other things you asked to hear more about are innovations in design. What are some of the other products that we might be able to do and achieve in order to create not necessarily affordable, capital A, capital H, but housing that is more affordable by design? There's more, the units are smaller, they're more compact, they use land more efficiently. Programs to help people get into housing. How do people who are just getting started or have a bad credit history or have, you know, now have gainfully employed, how can they get into housing? And then, some of the other ones were how to nonprofit, how does the nonprofit housing world work versus the for-profit housing world? And a couple other issues there. Okay. So, I put this up because I think this, in fact, David and I were just talking about this before the session. This is a project that a friend of mine that I do a lot of work with, it's just completed. And it's kind of interesting when we talk about innovative housing design. So, this is called a MUSE product, and you can kind of see there's this green spine that runs through the middle. There's these smaller units that are townhomes, that are kind of row homes, classic row homes, and then bigger, single-family, just a mixture of homes. And this is what's really being called the missing middle, building products that use sites more efficiently and create different products for different lifestyles. So, this is interesting. So, think about, this is a 3.2-acre site, you know? We're not talking about 20 acres. It's 3.2 acres. An acre and a half of that is green space or open space. It's 64 units total for a density of 20 units per acre. So, when we say 20 units per acre, everybody thinks, "Oh, my, you know, that's inappropriate. That's going to be a high-rise, and you're going to have elevators." This is all kind of single-level, two-story homes. It looks like a little neighborhood. So, this is the art and craft of more innovative housing types, the so-called missing-middle design, that allows you to build things more efficiently, use those limited sites, smaller sites better, but get to a density that actually will start to bring more affordable little a, little h housing forward. Then, some of the other things we talked about in terms of innovation, the cottage court model, which, you know, smaller homes, around a shared green space. Cohousing, which is another delivery method, same product, but just a different way in delivery that helps bring the cost down. Well, I'm going to -- so, it is basically, it is a series of individuals or families that want more intentionality than you would buy by just buying into a neighborhood. So, they come together and program and design the homes together as a group and then buy them ahead of time. So, it takes all the market risk out of it for the developer, and because of that, the market risk and the capital risk gets greatly reduced. It can bring the pricing down by about 20%. It's still the same product. There's, there is a share, there's usually an intentional component of it, which is a shared kitchen. Doesn't mean you have to eat dinner together every night, but there's a place where you can gather. And this is a project in Denver that's about, I think it's 23 units, has a little, it's on an acre and a half, but it creates a very, you know, tight little knit community neighborhood. I'm going to stop here because the computer's not cooperating, and we really want to get on to our panelists. So, I'm going to ask our panelists to come up. We're going to pull the chairs out here in the middle. So, if you guys want to do that while I'm introducing you, just come on, just bring these out so you can get in front of everybody. We'll -- one of you doesn't have a mic, is that right? Yeah, okay. So, all right. So, we'll work this out. So, while they're getting seated, I'll do some introductions so you kind of know who we've got tonight. And one of the things that we tried to do in putting the panel together tonight was represent a variety of perspectives in the housing world so that you can hear, you know, real stories from real people that are developing housing about solutions that are out there, lessons learned along the way, and frankly, some of the challenges and increasing challenges that we're seeing across, you know, any community in California and in many communities across the country as it relates to housing. So, on my immediate right is Larry Florin. Larry's the chief executive officer of Burbank Housing, which if any of you know, is one of the leaders in the nonprofit housing world. Larry's background is interesting because over 30 years in real estate, but working both in the nonprofit world, but before that in the private world, and then also in a series of city government roles. So, really great perspective on all the different areas that touch housing. Right here, we've got, I feel like I'm doing the Warriors thing here. Right here, we've got Steve Ledson, who many of you may know, local Sonoma boy here, has a fifth-generation Sonoma resident. He's a builder, contractor, also does wine and agriculture, but is actively building housing and throughout, throughout the community as well as really Northern California. So, he's got a lot of perspective on the private sector building world. And then, Benjamin Wickham, who is recently with the county of Sonoma. He's the affordable housing director for Sonoma County Development Commission. And Benjamin comes from Portland, which if anybody's been following Portland, has really been a leader on a lot of these subjects for many, many years. They've really, I've been, I was up there last year. It's phenomenal the way that the government and the community works. It's really is a kind of special place. So, I think the county's very fortunate to have him. And he's really, brings a perspective both in the public sector in Portland, but also in the private sector, operating a management company that had over 8,000 units at one time. And really, a lot of good information on the programmatic side that we're going to cover. And then, we're going to round it out with Jeff Zimmerman, who is also a local resident, well-known architect, especially in the housing world, both private housing as well as nonprofit affordable housing. So, with that, I'm going to not spend more time introducing you so we can spend more time having some questions. Okay, so, we're going to, if you don't mind, it's probably better for, I just did a brief intro, but I think it's going to be better for each of you to just give a quick little overview of your experience and maybe a project that you think is relevant to this housing issue and some of the things that we're talking about, just so people are a little better on.
I don't have a mic. Okay. Good evening, and thank you all for coming out. And somebody could let us know what the Warriors score is periodically. We really appreciate it. So, Burbank, let me just give you more background about our organization, Burbank Housing. We are Sonoma-based nonprofit. We've been around since 1980 and have built over 4,000 homes. Here are units of housing, whatever you want to call them, in Sonoma County. I was just adding up, we've built about 300 homes here in, Sonoma owned five different projects here that are, that are owned and managed by Burbank Housing. Our focus is 100% affordable housing. We only do what you could always call government-subsidized, rent-regulated housing. We exist largely working collaboratively with local governments to meet your housing demand and housing need. And just to give you an idea of what, what we, the population that we serve, our rents on the low end will range from about $300 a month to the very high end, about $1,200 a month. So, that's, that's the segment of the community that we support, otherwise known as 80, or 60% AMI and below, which in this community is actually the workforce of the community when you look who's making that kind of money. We also, we're a little bit unique in, with some of our colleagues in the industry. We also build homeownership. So, folks have built both, we do call mutual self-help, which is people build their own homes. We're doing less of that, but we have also built single-family homes. We actually have 100 homes under construction right now in Sonoma County, all the same basic design, 1,300 square-foot homes, three bedrooms, and they're all subsidized, so they're effectively selling from 290,000 up to about 400,000 on the high end, depending upon your income levels. That's the segment of the population that we serve, and that's the segment that Burbank Housing serves.
Harry's in the capital A, capital H, right? Okay, good. Steve?
Yeah, you can hear me fine. So, our family's been here since 1862 in the Sonoma Valley. I've been in the construction field since 1969, worked in several different trades. I went into business myself in 1977. I've built hundreds of homes all over Northern California, lots of subdivisions, all the way to Crescent City, you name it, all over. Probably built 200 homes here in Sonoma, Sonoma Valley. Also built a lot of commercial buildings, office buildings, wineries, apartment houses. I'm currently building 44 units in Cloverdale right now. Finished last year, we just finished the Nakora Place, which is 18 homes on Spain Street. And the year before that, we finished 26 houses on MacArthur Street. And we've been building since 1986, I think. We started at Armstrong and the States. I know that's about when we started the approval project, and there's 53 lots there, and I think I have like 20 left, if you could believe it. It's a long process. But, so, I've, you know, like I said, worked in a lot of different fields of the construction business, not just as a general contractor.
Yeah, so, very happy to be here. And I am rooting for the Portland Trailblazers, so I've just got to say that, everyone. But I like the Warriors too, so. So, I work for the Sonoma County Community Development Commission, and the commission is under the same roof as the Sonoma County Housing Authority. So, both of those agencies really serve the city of Sonoma as well. If you think about the money and programs that come down from the federal government, if that were a train, it stops in Santa Rosa and Petaluma. They have their own entitlements, but everything else in Sonoma County is under the umbrella of our agency, and so, I'm really happy to be here. I think I worked at the Housing Authority in Portland for a long time. I think I worked at the Housing Authority in Portland for a long time and the Housing Authority there had their own development department. So they would, they would seek funding and put together developments and oversee construction. The Sonoma County Development Commission doesn't really function quite like that in the Housing Authority. But we are working on some very interesting projects, including the Altamira Apartments here in Sonoma. And I think there's an opportunity for the Development Commission to really play a role as a support for the folks working for the city of Sonoma, some great folks like Kathy and David. So I'm really excited about trying to figure out ways that we can make things work. And this is a really important discussion, so I'm happy to be here.
I did the math earlier today. I've been designing homes for 40 years. I can't believe that. 30 years. Thank you, Laura. You may know me as that anyhow. I have been in private practice for 30 years and we've designed all over the United States, mostly in California, units up to 200 units to the acre and multimillion dollar customer states. So I'm all over the board, but I get my greatest joy out of doing low-income housing and going to the opening and seeing the people that get to move into these projects.
We're going to have to share here. So we're here to talk about housing. We're here to talk about delivering either more housing or more attainable housing. And which is, again, it's a universal problem throughout California. It's not something that's unique to Sonoma or Sonoma County. But I wanted to maybe get each of your perspectives on what do you think are some of the biggest factors that drive up either the price of housing or just make it more difficult to build housing that's attainable to, you know, to be able to buy a median-priced home or build a median-priced home in these communities. So Larry, you want to kick us off?
Sure. It's impossible. Anybody that gets into real estate development, building houses is out of their minds, just to be really sure. It is an incredibly convoluted process that we just sort of take for granted. Typically, our projects will take anywhere to get, everybody knows the word entitled? So zone, planning approval, whatever it is that you need to be able to even submit your building permits. So just to be able to get to that stage, anywhere from a year to three years to be able to get through the process, every single individual can stand up and oppose your project, put it on a slow track. The state of California has done a marvelous job of really botching up the system. And so we have 3.5 million, I think was the last, oh, 3.5 million statewide, I think, deficit in terms of housing? Yeah, 3.5 million home deficit. So you're not alone, by the way. If you want to, you feel as though you have a housing shortage here, you have brethren throughout the state that are struggling and having similar meetings like this throughout the entire state. Doesn't make you feel better, I know, but it's what we've caused our own crisis that we're in right now. We have an unbelievably convoluted housing process that takes you to buying a piece of property, to even getting to the point where you actually can submit plans and be approved for the projects. It doesn't make any sense most of the time and you have unfortunately only a small bit of control over that, some of the things that are out of your control that are state mandated. And they are trying to streamline the process and various communities are, but by and large, we've got a broken system here. I hate to breathe the bearer of bad news. And the broken system is what's causing housing prices to skyrocket. Anybody who took Economics 101 knows, supply and demand, we are basically out of whack in terms of supply and demand. And that's exactly why housing prices are what they are and why it's out of reach for most of us, most of the members of your community. Certainly my kids, it's out of their range and it's probably out of range for many of your children and the generation coming up. And so we're seeing a qualitative change in what goes on here. It's not all bad. There is starting to be recognition of the extreme problems that we have and there are starting to, starting to see sort of green shoots come up, mostly from the state of California, frankly speaking. I think this governor has really took the lead so far in making housing a top priority. He's actually put money into the system, which for a long time, folks like me that build affordable housing, there was no money. It just was gone. The entire state, when they dissolved redevelopment, they took away $2 billion in subsidy for affordable housing, just wiped it right off the table. It dramatically changed our industry and we're still trying to dig out from that. But props one and two, on the last ballot, put $4 billion into the system in the state of California. And this governor has already come forward with about a billion and a half additional dollars. And so how can you position ourselves to be able to access those funds to meet the demands of your community? That's through being able to get projects approved, entitled, ready to be funded and ready to be built. So I'm going to stop there.
Okay, so yeah, probably a totally different perception than what Larry has. Building from the private sector, I mean, the things that I run up against, and I'm going to speak more towards what I see here in Sonoma. I do build all over and probably Sonoma is actually one of the easier places to get through the system, to be honest with you. There's some real nightmares out there. But you know, I try to sit on both sides of the seat here because I live here and I want to build stuff that I think adds to the town. It's not just about the dollar. It's try to build something that adds character, that I feel proud of and that you can be proud of. And so when I sit on the other side and I see what you're up against, you know, like somebody says they want to build a project right next to your house or build affordable housing or something. And if you don't have a clear understanding, the first thing you say to yourself is, well, this is going to devalue my property or I'm going to have to look at this two-story building here or you're going to cut down my trees or you're going to destroy the field that I've been walking my dog in. So all these things come to mind. And so if the project, if you don't understand the project, if it's not real clear, you have a tendency to want to protect yourself. So I totally understand that. So I think for all of us in the community, if we can improve our process of knowing what's really going to go on on our properties that are around us would be a big help. Because what happens when, say, projects that I brought forward, not just here, but in other towns, and I go through, spend a lot of money on design, I've got carrying costs when I bought the property, interest is running, all these costs continue to run and paying architects and engineers and then the project is stopped and has to, you know, go back to the drawing board again because neighbors like yourself said, well, we don't want anything in our backyard. So, but I do know when I say that, that lots of times what you're looking at probably isn't the best project to be built here. And I'm not going to bring up and point out projects around here, but I understand where you're coming from. So how do we bridge that gap as a citizen of Sonoma to get the type of housing we want and make it more streamlined so as a developer, I'm not coming back two and three, four times trying to get a project. And to be honest with you, I haven't had as much trouble as I've seen with other projects here because I try to do my homework and bring you good stuff. And I think if you look around, I think I've built some pretty nice stuff. So all those costs add up extremely fast. They add up extremely fast. So somehow as a community and as a city, we got to shorten that. We got to streamline the process because, and those are things that we can control here, we still have to deal with the state, with all the government agents they bring down and the county taxes and just there's so many costs that get piled on. Like in Cloverdale, 22 units cost me a million dollars for permit fees. And they're not as high here. Maybe they're going to raise the rates. I don't know what David, but there you go, see? We all need money, right? So there's so many things that are thrown at a developer that if I look back over time and I say, well, why are we short housing? Well, it's because builders don't want to build it. There's too much time, too much red tape. And if you go buy a piece of property in Sonoma with the cost of it and you have any interest running, and then you bring in architects and, you know, engineers and experts and you can go through a million dollars in no time in today's world. So where does that money come from? In my case, which is different than what Larry and everybody else is going to tell you, is I'm not getting any money free from anywhere. I'm having to take it out of my own pocket or borrow it. So am I going to eat all that cost? I do eat some of it, but it's going to have to get passed on to whether you're renting a house or buying a house. So it's driving the price up. So as a community, we want housing. We want it to be nice. We definitely want, you know, a lot of families here, including myself, where kids grow up here and they can't, they can't live here. So we got to figure out a way that we can streamline these projects and keep the cost down so the rents are lower and the price of selling a house is lower. And I've built houses, I used to build houses for $60,000 when I was building in Santa Rosa, but you know, I'm building houses here now that are renting for, on the affordable side for $2,400 or if they're not, they're $3,000, $3,200. Then I'm building houses in Armstrong that are in the millions of dollars. So I'm building a huge range. One of the things that I like to do and that I want to talk to you about is that when you're all looking at affordable housing, lots of times people think that, okay, well, if I'm going to have five or six affordable houses in here, the developer's going to cut things out of it. So it's going to look different. It's not going to be as nice inside. So we're going to get a different person in here and they're going to run this place down. Personally, I don't do that. I can't speak about everybody else, but I try to build the houses to look exactly the same, make everything on the inside, everything is exactly the same. It's just that it's $1,015, $2,000 less money a month. That keeps your community together. That lets all price point people live in the same community. It doesn't make any difference, anything about you at all. You all can live in the same town, the same community, live right next to each other, which is the way I grew up. So I think we need to come together and there's a lot more things I can talk about, but I don't want to take too much of my time here. But as a community, if we can come together and maybe say the things that you want to see when projects come forward, what your concerns are, so we can move forward and cut a lot of this lost time and money and cost out. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Benjamin, I gave Portland a lot of props, so I'm curious if there's any, because you have done so many things well up there. Are there things that you've seen up there that relate to the cost issues or both Larry and Steve talked about the timing and the processing issues? Any good takeaways there where you've been able to at least find some solutions that have worked better?
Yeah, I think it's hard to compare Oregon and California and Portland and this area. You know, Oregon doesn't have SEQA. Oregon doesn't have, you know, a lot of the issues that slow projects down. But I think to Steve's point, you know, what makes it difficult for developers to build, particularly we think about affordable housing, a lot of that's nonprofit developers, is risk. So if you're coming in, if you're a nonprofit developer and you want to build something, you find a piece of land and you buy it and you have to use some kind of short-term financing. It's like using your credit card. The interest rates are high and you have to pay those interest rates until you can build something and convert it to permanent financing, which is more like a mortgage, a security against your property. So because of the length of time it takes to get through all these difficult processes, and that does include the SEQA process and it can include, a lot of times though, it includes the city planning department or the county's planning department and their permitting processes. So I think there are places where folks here as a community can voice their interest in supporting measures and arrangements that speed those things up. Because if the developer's risk goes down, their cost goes down. And as Steve said, if you put less money into it, you can charge less from a market perspective. But for the nonprofits as well, they need to be able to start working on a development project and get it done within two or three years instead of five or seven or 10 or longer than that. If we're going to start putting supply into the pipeline, and I think we need to see a wide range of housing. So we're, we talk about affordable, but the chart that we put up, it goes all the way up to, let's say, 150% of very median income. And that could be a couple of folks working in professional positions for the county of Sonoma and they're, they have good incomes. They're still running at that level. And so there has to be housing for that missing middle, as we, a lot of people are starting to call it, all the way down to say, someone who's retired, lives by themselves on a social security income. You know, we need housing for all those folks. And so we have to be able to address what it takes to provide that for all those different income levels.
Jeff, you're on the design end, but you've seen it kind of from beginning to end on a lot of projects. What do you run into that are kind of the big cost drivers?
Well, I just draw the pictures. So it's different. I wanted to kind of start digging on the car. The first thing we designed for in multifamily housing is where to put the damn car. We're not even thinking about people. And we need to get aggressive in how we park cars, tandem parking, getting lifts, lessening the requirements. But a lot of these developments, when we go to high-density housing, to park a car can cost as much as $60,000 a car. It's just crazy, you know, and we're taking that out of the house. So I'd like to see this neighborhood groups get together with the city and lessen some of the parking requirements that we have to design to and just get off of that. The process is tough. It pays well for us because we're in the process. And he says he's got to pay architects, but it's pretty, it's tough to get through. The one thing that I really am, we're fortunate for is in the Northern Bay Area, we are dealing with some of the best nonprofits in the world. And they hire talented architects and their reputation is only as good as their last project. And if you go around and look at low-income housing projects, you'd be surprised. They can be very, very nice, oftentimes nicer than their neighbors.
So I'm going to come back to you. I want to start with you because on this next question and it's, you know, I've shared with you some of the terms, but there's a lot of buzzwords. And I have this mantra in the planning industry that it takes about three years to come up with a really catchy new term and then we ruin it in some way or another, you know. So whether, it used to be cluster housing, but now that's like a really bad word and PUDs and things like that. But housing diversity is one of the big buzzwords right now. And Jeff is an architect and I showed that project. There's a lot of innovation that's gone on in terms of thinking about different ways to build housing, way to design housing and site plan it and get more density, but not a lot of it's getting implemented. And so the question is why? It seems like the design industry is way ahead of the practical ability to deliver it. So where, again, where are the barriers on realizing some of these great little cute pictures that I showed that actually getting that to scale?
Well, as an architect, I can tell you, I've never had an original thought. Okay? I know history and I think that we as Americans need to take some lessons. When we go to Europe, what makes Europe so nice? It's density. It's open space. Less junk. I think we as a society need to adjust the way we live and I think it's going to happen naturally. I had the fortunate experience of doing a cohousing project with my brother, who's a 60s child, that finally got his commune. And it's a senior housing project where people live together with less and help each other. And seniors, they live longer when they have a community. And there are just, there are lessons that I think we need to go back and revisit. Obviously, you know, modular housing is going to be something that we're going to be dealing with in the future and it's come a long way. The nonprofits we work with can't do it as cheaply as they can build a house, but eventually Yeah, well, none of the contractors like working with it because the subcontractors don't get to work. They don't go together well on the site sometimes. But I think, you know, we've had a mindset that it's a double-wide trailer, just stacked. But I think if you can see what they're doing with modular housing now, it's pretty spectacular. And I'm not talking about just blue homes. There are some fantastic designs that's going on in modular housing. And I think once we get the manufacturing into the process and can deliver, you know, when I sit down and do a housing project, I've got like five kitchens in my mind that I know I can do efficiently and I draw it every damn time. Build the thing, bring it to the site, drop it in and let's frame around it. I mean, there are many ways that we can be taking parts and pieces of our housing and installing it with standard construction.
I was actually going to jump in on the modular housing issue because this is something we look at all the time. So the construction industry has got to be the least efficient, most archaic medieval construction industry remaining in the world. I mean, if you think about it, you sit there and you put together a house, you wait for your plumber to show up, but you can't do anything, then put the appliances in until the plumber comes. It's just, it's incredibly inefficient and it really hasn't changed much in the last 500 years, I would guess. But there's a new system that we're, maybe out of necessity because of the cost of construction now. So cost of construction, just to give you an idea, has gone up 50% since the fires here in Sonoma County. And it's continuing to go up. So it's becoming out of necessity, we're having to look at other. So it's becoming out of necessity, we're having to look at other construction types. Modular housing has been the panacea. Everybody's been talking about modular housing as being our great savior. There's actually a factory that was opened up in Mare Island that's been doing modular. There's a factory in actually Idaho, believe it or not, of all places, a company called Gerdin, that came to being because of the North Dakota oil boom. And the oil companies funded this factory to get started. Gerdin's been the sole survivor in this industry. It's like you said, it's not mobile homes. I mean, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference when you look at the actual product that comes in. I'm watching one go up in Oakland lately, and it's an incredible building and it'll be incredibly, it's a luxury condo building basically that they're putting up, and they're going eight stories and it's all modular. So it's, there are ways to do it. We have not yet, though, mastered sort of the technique. The way I would look at it is, you saw where the car industry was when Henry Ford mastered the, you know, the way to mass produce cars. That's what we've got to get to in terms of modular housing, if it's going to be effective. Right now, you can't order, in order to, what they do is they keep people on salary there. So instead of bringing them piecemeal to work from one job to the next job, you pay them to 12 months, which means you have to keep a constant production line going. In our industry, it's incredibly up and down. I mean, think about the approval process. I can't guarantee for a modular company that I'm going to have my product ready for him to build or that factory to build in six months, because I don't know if the project's going to be done by then. But I will tell you one thing, once the project is approved, I have to get in the ground within 180 days or I lose my funding. And so it just does, there's a complete mismatch in the industry right now that needs to be solved. But that is a basic fundamental flaw right now in the system. We have to fix the way that buildings are constructed right now. We're pricing ourselves out of, it's just crazy what the prices are right now, and they're going up literally every day.
Yeah. Of course, I'm going to have a lot of different views, I can tell you that. So I've never seen a good modular home in my life, so let's be honest with you. I'm sure there might be some someday, but I don't see it. You know, one of the things that I see when I look at all of you is that, how many of you here can read a set of plans, you know? What, you know, is there 10% that really can read a set of plans? So you don't know what's really being built next to you. You're being told all this stuff. And so there's a big gap between what you see and what really gets built. I mean, I could start going around town here. So I try to simplify things. And so what, when he's saying about modular homes, that's a simplification of doing something because it's done in a factory. But I believe that there's ways to simplify things in building houses and make them look in your neighborhood. Because, I mean, this is your town, you moved here for a reason and you want to keep that reason. So how do we have more housing of all different price points and make it still be the reason you moved here, moved to this town? You have to realize that just because you bought a piece of property, you looked across the field, that that isn't going to stay like that because we've all had kids and, you know, so we have to get off of that thing. We can't say, you know, build my neighborhood. But we got to come together and come up with better ways to cut the cost without cutting the look of the building, without making it look like a different town, you know. And there is a lot of new technology. I mean, I know these guys have all built some good projects. There's, I mean, everybody will. And that's another thing I want to talk about is that, so as a builder, as anybody in business, we all want to make as much as we can make, right? You're not doing this for your health. So, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not a hobby. We're trying to make money. So everybody has a different perception of what they want to give to the town or what they want to put in their pocket. And you're all susceptible to all of that. So one of the things that I see makes a big difference is who drew these plans? Who's the architect? And what have they actually designed or built before? Have you done something like this before? So that's key, looking around, what other projects have they designed? What do they look like? What has builders built? And it can kind of tell you what they're going to do again. So it's, I think this, we need more education and cut down the timeframe and at the same time, learn some of these new ways to do stuff. But I'm against, you know, modular homes over what I've seen, so. Go ahead.
Benjamin, I was going to ask you about missing middle because you brought the term up, but I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that last conversation about construction costs, or can we jump to the missing middle thing? Okay. So you brought up the term, I showed that one thing, and it's become, it's another one of those darling terms right now because it covers, and it covers everything from income to, at least in the example I was showing, more product diversity. So tell me a little bit about what, you know, what does missing middle mean to you? What have you seen that's actually working or ways that, you know, how are people actually trying to address that, you know, that category?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's why I like to, I think a good term is attainable housing rather than affordable. Because affordable seems to have sort of a, it's become a label. But attainable could apply to anyone in various situations, you know. And so, and even, you know, in all the communities around Sonoma County, there's folks at the different income levels, and they're contributing to the community. They have, maybe they have a service job and they're making $15 an hour. So there's, there needs to be housing that's attainable to those folks. And the way that we can produce that housing is different. But any kind of housing that's not going to be strictly market, it's going to need some sort of subsidy or someone who's philanthropic and wants to provide something back to the community. But I think as the county's position, the development commission is, we try to look for opportunities to maximize the value of money that we're going to put into a project. And I know that Sonoma is working on a housing trust fund. You're not going to have, it's not going to be a $20 million trust fund, it's going to be small. But the quote, remember that quote from Archimedes, "If you give me a lever big enough, I'll move the earth." So you can take a few dollars, put them into a housing development, and that will attract other money. So if Sonoma puts a little bit of money in, and the county then is able to put funding in, and we have various funding streams that we work with, that all can be brought to bear here in the city of Sonoma for the most part. And that can attract private financing and lending, and then you can put a project together. And so the missing middle, really, if it's from, say, however you look at it, it could be from 80% of AMI all the way up to 150%, it costs, it takes less subsidy to build a project like that. And it doesn't, you know, it could be various sizes. It could be for sale, single-family homes. It could be smaller cottages, the design that we saw on the slide where it's a well-designed neighborhood, there's more density. But it's addressing a lot of folks who are, they work full-time, they are just unable to access housing at $3,500 or $4,000 a month. You know, the rents that you're starting to see around the county or renting a single-family home, it's not attainable for those folks. And so for us to be able to create that kind of housing, it doesn't take that much subsidy. It takes some innovation. We're working on a property right now where the development commission purchased some surplus land that the water agency had. So we paid for the property, we bought the property, and then we put out a request for proposals, and different developers came in. And what we told them is, we don't want to put any more money into this deal than what we paid for the land. We want you to come up with an innovative way to make the most number of attainable units as possible, and restricted, that's the big capital AH. And then the rest of them can be market rate. And we also want you to tell us how we can get the most out of the money we're putting into this deal. And so we got some really innovative proposals, and one of them said, well, we're going to give you an equity stake in the property. So after the initial phase, say 15 to 17 years, you'll have a right of first refusal, an option to purchase, and you'll also have a 21% equity stake. Well, that's a good use of public funds. And so there's innovative ways for us to use money to create housing for the workforce without just, you know, giving public funds away. And we have to be, we have to be diligent about it and we have to be astute about how we're putting that money into a property. And so I think the same thing could be done. That's a pretty large development, and in the city of Sonoma, you're probably not going to see something that large. But even with a smaller project, you could use the same principle. Even with a small housing trust fund, you could probably leverage that money and accomplish quite a bit to provide that missing, missing level of housing.
Yeah, it's magic. It's alchemy, actually. Yeah. You should see about gold. We did think it would be helpful to spend a minute. Everybody ready to fall asleep? I can give you a lecture on low-income housing taxes. It's the most boring subject you've ever seen in your life. But the way that we build housing is typically, we take one, like you said, $1 and we'll turn it into $10. So I'm going to give you a specific example of a project going on down the road from you. It's a 50-unit multifamily project, multifamily affordable project with primarily one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments. And it's about 80% done right now. It's actually in Napa, but right down the road from here. But it was $25 million project. We have 13 different funding sources that have gone into that project, but the project started with the local community. So of the $25 million that it cost us to, it's going to cost us to construct that project, $4 million of that were local monies, and that, by local, was city and county money together that came. But it was that local money that allowed us to unlock the other $21 million that we needed to be able to build that project. We could not have even applied for funds through the state or the federal government if it was not for that local money. So I can't emphasize, to the extent that you want to have housing that appeals to the sector of the community that we serve, and by the way, the folks that we serve, I think a better term right now is workforce housing. Because the folks who are, we're living in our communities by and large, and we have over 10,000 Sonoma County residents living in Burbank housing right now, 80% of them are employed, and most of them are folks that you see every day on the street. And they're the ones that need subsidized housing. They just can't afford, they're out, it's out, housing's out of the range right now for them. I think they have to pay $160,000 a year to be able to buy a median home now in Sonoma County. That's the year income. Average rent is $2,300 a month in the county. And even for renting a home now, it's out of, it's out of, it's out of range in normal, for normal statistics. The whole system's wacky. And so you need to be able, so this is, if you want to keep your community intact, the folks who basically are, you know, the paramedics, the teachers, the bus drivers, you name it, those are the folks that are, right now, given the dynamics of the economics of this community, need a subsidy. And the only way to attack, to be able to get that subsidy is by local funds that have to go into it. I can't emphasize that enough. You really need to be able to lever that $1, like Ben was talking about, into $10. We can do that. We know how to do that. Have a really excellent staff of folks that that's what they do all day, is they turn that $1 into 10. But it starts with a local community support, both in terms of the approval process as well as a financial commitment to the project.
I just want to mention that, I don't know if folks saw in the Press Democrat, was an interesting article about how many people have moved out of Sonoma County in the year following the fire, and it's close to 3,000. And so it was interesting, I was in a Starbucks, listening to some folks, a group of folks chatting, and they were saying, you know, gas here is like $4.30 a gallon, but in other parts of the country, it's like $2.58 a gallon. So it's not affordable, gas is not affordable here, but it is in other parts of the country, which is strange. That's a whole different subject. But the same applies to housing. So if people get to the point where they can't afford housing here, they can move to other parts of the country where it is attainable for them. So that's a problem. If we saw another 3,000 people move out of Sonoma County in the next year after the fires, that's starting to become a big problem for Sonoma County and for every community here. So I think it's something, to Larry's point, you know, that it really is a local problem and it has to have a local solution as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, talking about cost of construction and this missing middle, is that the projects that Jim showed up here on the slides are projects I'd love to build, more density, those are great projects. And I think, you know, I had him study them closely, but they looked pretty nice. So I think you could build some stuff that, what's the density on the one that was like the white one? What was the density on that?
That showed, yeah, there's 20 units an acre.
Yeah, so when you...
How many people are here? Okay, so make sure you show up those meetings when those developers come.
Yeah, so, you know, if you have a good design, you get the right architect, and you have a piece of property in the right location, that's a great project to build. You're going to build that a lot cheaper than if you're building 10 units an acre. You know, and most people, you go back to the old days, you get four houses an acre. So we're talking 20, but that really cuts your cost down. I want to say those are nice, nice projects.
There was a lot of interest in the survey. I don't know.
I think some of the city towns around Sonoma County are really looking at the fact that there's housing that's affordable right now, but if investors come in and purchase it, if it's not deed-restricted, what they're going to do is they're going to renovate it, put the rents up to market, and then you, that's lost to the folks who were able to access it before. So, you know, it just depends on the type of project. But I've seen somewhere, say it's an eight-plex, the rents are low, but there's a lot of deferred maintenance, it needs a new roof, you know, systems need to be upgraded. And if the community can step up and purchase that property, there are funds that it's much easier to put in after the property's been acquired. And so one of the big barriers for the type of money that we can put into housing is that there's a big environmental component. Not only is there CEQA, but there's also NEPA. How many people have heard of NEPA? The National Environmental Policy Act. So if you put $1 of federal money into an apartment community, like Altamira is going to have that, or they already had to do this, they have to do a separate analysis for NEPA. It's similar to CEQA, but it's at the national level. So for properties that are doing rehab, so if, let's imagine that Kathy had some money, Kathy over here had some money, and she saw there's a, there's a six-plex that's very affordable and it's up on the market, and she knows that if somebody buys that, they're going to, they're going to make everybody move out, put it up to market as soon as they can. So if she can buy that, then the city can come to Sonoma County Development Commission for funding to do all the capital work, and that's exempt from NEPA. So rehabilitation on a property is a category where you don't have to do that environmental review. So it's much cheaper and much faster to get that, to get approved for that money. And so that's what we're doing with some other communities, where he said, go ahead and do what you can to take down that property, and we can help on the backend. We can help you maintain it, and we can help you upgrade it and keep it affordable. So I think those are good strategies. I think it doesn't have to be 180-unit apartment development, it could be eight, it could be four, it could be small. And every, every little bit that's added to the affordable stock for each community is very meaningful. And then if we, if you put a restrictive covenant on the deed, a deed of trust against the title, then you ensure that that affordability will stay in place. And so that's kind of what we're working with. We'd like to see the capital A, capital H, because then you know you're ensuring long-term affordability and it can't go back to market and be purchased by someone for an investment purpose.
I have a question of you. So when you have a NEPA project and you're freezing a place so the property taxes don't go up? In other words, if you go in and you redo this eight-unit apartment house, and now it's a lot nicer looking, it's definitely worth more money, do your property taxes go up or they don't go up?
Well, yeah, if you're, if, so if these are deed-restricted properties, so by, Sonoma County actually has a fairly progressive, believe it or not, property tax assessment system when it comes to affordable housing. So if I buy and deed-restrict a piece of property, it's eligible for, it's called a welfare exemption, so we're actually, we don't... a welfare exemption, so we're actually, we don't pay any property tax on it at all. So it's, it's a major source of incentive for us to buy. And I'm just going to tear off what Ben said, because we're actually doing what he's talked about. We just started this in the last year, and it's in Jim's hometown of Healdsburg that we've been most aggressive. But last December, we closed on a 56-unit existing property in Santa Rosa. It's actually on the east side, the first project we had a long time on the east side of Santa Rosa, close to the west side. But it was 56 units of what they call naturally occurring, naturally occurring affordable housing. It was, the rents were about $1,100 to $1,200. It was on the market, and we were able to appeal to the property owner, who is a very civic-minded individual, to actually lower the price that he was selling it for, to sell it to us as a nonprofit. He took a tax exemption as part of the discount that he gave us. So we bought it below, slightly below market. It was still a fairly expensive acquisition for us. But we were able to keep 56 of these homeowners in place. They're paying 11, and the low end, they're paying $950 a month, and the high end, they're paying $1,200 a month. City of Santa Rosa came in with $2.5 million towards what was a $15 million acquisition. And then we were able to borrow the rest of the money. What Ben was talking about, now what we're going to do is we're going to do something called a tax credit syndication, and we're going to go in and basically sell tax credits against that, use that money to fix up, to fix up the building. It was in much-needed deferred maintenance on there, and so we have to get in there. And we're spending about eight, between $80,000 and $100,000 on each of the units. So by the time the project is done, it'll be a practically new project, but the rents will be restricted. They can only go up 2% to 3% a year because of the regulatory agreement that's recorded against it. And the city of Healdsburg, we're actually working on three different buildings right now, where the city has stepped in, tied up the building, brought us in, and we're in the process of closing on those. It'll be about 40 units total in the city of Healdsburg by the time we're done with acquiring these. And so there's ways, that's an important part of the equation here, is preserving that which is affordable in your community so that it doesn't start to disappear. Yeah, so it was about $250,000 a door to acquire the properties, and it's costing us, on a multifamily project, equivalent $450,000 to $500,000. So it's order of magnitude about half.
I wanted to talk about a couple of the crumbs that were left on the table on the outmoded properties. Most of these properties were not developed at high densities, and there's a lot of land around a lot of these, and they can be easily... I'm sorry. A lot of these outmoded properties were not developed at higher densities, and there's a lot of open space around these. So while you're rehabbing them, you can also add units around them. We've done that as well. Next topic. Well, you know, with the building codes changing and the fact we're beginning net zero, buildings are not getting more affordable. We're building to build. Hopefully they'll be easier to maintain and use less energy, but they're going to be more expensive to build. And the new code's always doing that. Something that happens in market, not-for-profit housing, is we're always building accessible units. Accessible units are units that someone can come into if they're ADA. They're a lot more expensive to build, and the market rate units don't have to do that. Though there are many burdens placed on low-income housing, and need to look at some of those laws, loosening those. Yeah, but what are the, yeah, you know, like the small village stuff, what are the densities of those? They're just not that high a density, they're car-oriented, they're usually built in areas where you have open space and you need to park cars. I think, you know, the biggest innovation we need to do is we need to get public transit to areas where housing is being built. You know, again, the car.
Well, I just, segueing off what Jeff said, that is one of the big differences in, with the city of Portland, where I was for a long time, is, and it takes a long time to get to that place, but Portland really changed their approach to their parking requirement for new development. And so, of course, there's, there's a pretty big transit infrastructure now. There's light rail, and there's streetcar, and there's a really good bus system. But they got to the point where projects in the urban center, their parking ratio was zero. And, you know, it's maybe unimaginable to people to think about that, but it works. And so you don't have to go, you can't go from, from 1.5 to zero overnight, but to start thinking about really intentionally supporting less parking. And a lot of times when a project is coming before the planning commission, or the planning department, or the city council, folks line up who are against it, and that's what they're talking about, traffic. I'm worried about traffic, I'm upset about traffic, we can't build this because there's going to be too much traffic. So, you know, it's kind of something where folks have to just make a conscious decision and say, you know, it's going to take some real effort and determination to get over that, over that hump. But other communities, you know, that's happening. And Portland has its own host of problems, so it's, it's got other things to deal with. But they've really made a significant headway in dealing with the car problem, and making that a more, just a more pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly type of a community. And, you know, people do kind of adjust their habits if that's made available. And then you can have different types of neighborhoods. I think there were a lot of houses, we used to joke, when I was up there, we'd call them snout houses, because the garage sticks out, that's all you see is the, these like snout-like garages. And so it's like, it's built for cars. But if you have a kind of a walking-friendly neighborhood where it's front porches facing each other, and maybe there's an alley in the back between, or there's ways of, or there's pocket neighborhoods where there's centralized parking for three or four cars, and it's not driveways and garages. So, you know, some people might say, well, that, that's not going to work for me, I need to have my cars. But if you built something like that, if Steve built something like that, you know, the people that want to live in that kind of a neighborhood would come and live there. And that starts to change the dynamic. So I think it's important to have that as a goal, because it does make a big difference in the livability of, of, of an urban center and a community.
I'm going to echo what Jeff said, start off with, when we build a project, a multifamily project, we start by solving for the parking, and basically figure out how many units are left after we figure out how much parking is required there. It's a messed-up way to be able to design a project, but that's the reality, literally the way we do it. We're building actually, though, a project in Santa Rosa, you may have read about it, it's the former Journeys and Mobile Home Park that was destroyed in the fires in 2017. We're building a project there with 160 units of affordable housing and 300 market rate units that are going to be there. And one of the things we're really struggling with is the parking. When you're building a project like that, it's going to be around for 50, 60, 70 years. And I think we could all pretty much guess that our parking life, our car, our relationship to the car, is going to evolve over the next 50, 60, 70 years. So how do you build a building now that's going to be around during a time when there's a transformative, yeah, and it's, the car's just going to transform in terms of the way we look at it? This community, and I think Sonoma County in general, is a suburban slash rural community that's been in love with your cars. I mean, people just accept it, that's how you get everywhere you go. You have to have, not one car, you have to have two cars, and maybe three cars. We're going to need to change the way we look at that. One project we're building right now, we actually went out and bought some cars, they're shared cars for the, for the project. We were able to reduce the amount of parking that we had to provide. We got a grant from the local, one of the municipal choice energy company there, served this particular community, and they helped us buy 10 cars there that are going to be available for the people in that, in that project. And as a result, we were able to reduce our parking, number of parking spaces we had there by 40. And so there are ways to do that, you just have to be creative about it. And we're actually doing that. So the project, the project that we're actually bringing to market in August, it'll be open in Napa, as you can imagine, they have the same concern. When we got funding, they said, we'll give you a funding on one condition, the only people that live and work here can live in this building. Well, unfortunately, federal law doesn't allow you to do that, something called fair housing. However, what you can do is you can be aggressive in terms of marketing the units to folks who live. So you can identify the people that are in need, establish a waiting list of people who, they get on your waiting list so that they're the number ones that you have to go through to determine whether they can move into. We have an incredible matrix of complex system of making someone actually has to be able to qualify for a unit. The one thing that drove me absolutely nuts, we just finished a 79-unit project last year. We had 15 units that were for homeless folks, individuals. How hard would you think it would be in Santa Rosa to fill 15 units with homeless? It took, those were the last units to fill because they had to qualify with so many to, Ben read it, that wasn't your fault personally. But anyway, there was, it's, 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 there's ways to do it so that you can give a, you have to be proactive, you have to be out there in the community identifying those individuals who qualify, getting them on the list so that when the units become available, the first ones up there.
Right, there's, there's little that can be done in terms of establishing a preference because of fair housing law. And, and we're really taking another look at fair housing in all of the funding that we're putting into projects. We, we're going to really put a lens on that. But that's exactly, what Larry says is exactly right. If, if you're going to develop, let's say, an affordable housing community here, very early in the process, the developer needs to do some on-the-ground outreach to folks to let them know, here's what it's going to be like, here are the income requirements, let's get you on the waiting list if you're interested. And they can, they can get that information out there, and really make sure that folks from the community apply. If they wait too long and it just goes into a newspaper, like the Press Democrat or something like that, or goes on Craigslist, then you're not going to target those local folks. And it's, it's, you, you can structure a waiting list so that the folks that got on there first who qualify get access to the housing. So that's the way to do it. But you can't really set a requirement that says, no one who doesn't live inside this boundary can come and live here. It's not, it's not up to snuff with fair housing. But there are ways to really try and make it accessible to everybody in the community as, as early as possible.
Yeah, and I'll shut up after, just quickly, to just to give you an example, the way that this can work. We opened the waiting list last month for this project. When the doors opened, we said 9 o'clock on a Wednesday, we were going to start taking applications. We had 180 people in line ready to fill out applications, all of whom lived in that community, lived or worked in that community. And that was a direct result of that outreach.
I can tell you about that. I mean, that's going to, when you spread anything out, it's, the cost is way, 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 way more money. I can't even begin to tell you how much it would make the cost go up. It's so much cheaper to build in one location, 40 units, and in the lumber, everything's right there. When you design the building, you have no waste materials, because you figure out every single length, every vanity, every piece of trim, everything, and so you cut all the waste out. If you're building over here and you got, what you have left, you got a hall over here, I mean, it's just, it goes way up. Exactly.
Well, there's, there should be a way, I mean, the integration to the neighborhoods is far better than building a project. We don't like to have projects. And there should be a way, if, if the city came up with a plan to do that, that they could, you know, speed that through. You know, maybe, if the funding's not there to build a big project, build two, four-unit buildings a year, you know, and spread them out. I think it's a great way to go.
I just, I just say that I think that's a, the idea of building, say duplexes, is probably tough. When you talk about building ADUs, or what they call junior accessory dwelling units, if there's a program, permit Sonoma has a program, a fee, a fee waiver program if you build an ADU and rent it to someone of low income. So that's an effective way. I think accessory dwelling units, and then going up to not huge developments, but a certain, a minimum where it becomes effective, maybe 20 units or 15. But to try and scatter duplexes around is probably not something that's going to financially be feasible for, for a city or a county to try and support.
We won't build anything for a multifamily rental project, affordable, we won't, we won't touch anything. We generally, our rule of time is 40 units or above. Just it doesn't make sense from order of magnitude of the, what we have to provide onsite. We'll occasionally do 30, 35, but the order of magnitude's really 40. On a homeownership project, doesn't make sense for us to do anything under 20 units. It just, it just is not cost-effective.
Yeah, I want to say a couple of things. You know, accessory units are the cheapest to build. I mean, you're already there building the house. It's usually over a garage, like an Armstrong, and so you already have the foundation, all you have to do is make it a little bit thicker. I mean, and you're there, you have all the subs. It's, it's the cheapest way to get another unit. It's ideal. Another thing is, is too, when you're talking about duplexes and against 40 units, duplexes are fine, you know, when you have a lot of local builders and they're, they got their bags on, they're working themselves, they're going to do things cheaper. Those are the kind of people, it gives them work, gives those local contractors work to do. They come in, they build these small projects, and they can build them a lot cheaper than a bigger contractor. Somebody bigger's not going to be able to even touch that. So there's different ways to look at it.
Well, there's a big debate going on right now because Portland didn't have an inclusionary requirement, and they, they imposed one, and there are folks that are saying, well, building permits and units delivered in the downtown core are now way down from where they were. So folks are just going out and building smaller projects so they don't have to, you know, satisfy that they don't, they don't trigger the inclusionary rule. But I think, and the other issue is, a lot of developers will just fee out. They'll do an in-lu fee, they'll rather pay the money than build the affordable unit. So inclusionary housing, I think, needs to be combined with some kind of incentive, an additional incentive. And that doesn't have to be expensive, it could be fast-tracking of, of the entitlement process or permitting, or it could be, you know, some kind of fee, you know, other fee waiver somewhere else. But I think the inclusionary housing has to be, a rule like that has to be very carefully thought out. You have to look at all the different, you know, you can solve one problem and then cause one over here. You don't want to put an inclusionary housing rule in and then stifle development. So it's something that needs some, some think tanking before you try and do it.
We've actually been talking to a developer in Petaluma, actually the last two days, so it's, this is real time. He has three, they have 300 approved units in Petaluma right now in three different sites. City's changed its requirement, so you have to do onsite inclusionary 20% in Petaluma. It killed this project. He doesn't, the economics don't work. And so he went out and actually bought a piece of dirt, and we're trying now to convince the city, he's going to help us, he's going to subsidize us to build 44 units of affordable housing adjacent to his property, but not within his property, within his project. And the city's indicated that they're open to a proposal of that. But that was an example where 20% onsite inclusionary killed a fully entitled, fully financed project that was ready to go down here, down the road here in Petaluma. financed project that was ready to go down here, down the road here in Petaluma.
So that inclusion thing varies between towns. It varies on what all your costs are. Here in Sonoma, the last two projects I've built, we had 20%. And there's a lot of ways to look at that. So my goal is to take a look at the project as a whole, to make every house look the same, so nobody feels like I'm buying something cheaper or I got the cheaper model. Add up my total cost and spread it back across the house. And when I do that, the 20% number works. Now, if I went into those affordables and I cut stuff out of them and I made them look different, then I could get that, you know, I could make it more. So if you want things to look good, I think 20%, what you have in Sonoma is a really good number. But you could cut that just by cutting what you build, cut the quality, cut the design. So in other towns, you know, where your permit fees are even way higher, that number doesn't work. And so I don't know what the permit fees at Petaluma, but I would assume there's probably more cost, other costs there. Throws the numbers off.
But, yeah, no, it's actually, getting the building's always better. Yeah, it doesn't, if, the way that the fee structure works is that you, the political will is never there to fully absorb the cost, local cost through the fee structure. So I don't know what the fee system is here, but it is likely, will cost you $40 to $50 a square foot to be able to, on a fee structure, to be able to subsidize the number of affordable units that you would otherwise get to an inclusionary. So, I mean, I think you're better off by requiring a certain number of units be built as a condition of approval. That way you know they'll be built. I live off the mitigation fees that communities have in part, but I'd still advocate for you folks to build where you can.
Play. Obviously, it needs to get picked up by somebody and it's going to raise the housing stock around that project. If the new units are more expensive, everything else is going to get more expensive around it as well. So it affects the whole neighborhood it's in, it's not just the project.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a little, that's interesting. I'll make a little comment about that. So we talked a little bit ago about who's renting or who's buying these houses here. Well, I can tell you, as a builder here, that I get way more out-of-town people coming here, buying houses and renting houses than I do in-town people, way more. So then when you look at affordable housing and you look at this inclusionary factor of 20%, you're going to raise the cost of the regular, normal home. So who's going to pay for that? Somebody that has more money, it's not going to be here. They're going to come from out of town, they're going to buy that home, that's going to help put money into the affordable. So it's a catch-22, you know? And then at the same time, you're trying to balance all these costs and interest of running and it's not an easy task and a lot of people say, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a really good strategy for entitlement jurisdictions, so the city of Sonoma or whatever other city, town, because if you go through that process and you do a specific plan, usually a specific plan is combined with an EIR, an environmental impact review, and that will, that can be used by the developer to address CEQA very quickly. They can sort of tear off that. Instead of spending 12 months and $300,000 or maybe it's more than that to do an EIR themselves, they can use the one that the city already did for that area. And as long as their project is in compliance with the specific plan, then it can really speed up their process. So it reduces their risk, it reduces their carrying costs, and they can move into getting their project going faster. So, and there's a Senate bill two included funding for entitlement jurisdictions to do that kind of planning. So there's, there is actually money out there that can be accessed to do specific plans and EIRs. And that takes time. You know, if you started that process now, it might be 18 months before it was done. But when it was done, then anything in that specific plan area, developers could come in and move a project along much more quickly. That was too esoteric, but...
Oh, yeah, I just said, the key word here is buy right housing, the ability to be able to go in and get an over-the-counter permit. And that's the, if you may hear that term, buy right housing, it's just the term. That's what the goal is here, to get developers to know the community's consensus and they've cleared out all the regulatory hurdles, that you can get a permit over the counter. There are communities that you actually can do that in. That's the whole idea, is to pre-plan, to get out of the way all the regulatory hurdles. You've all decided you want to see this kind of housing in this location and you have cleared out all the regulatory obstacles that are in your way. As Ben said, there's now money in the state budget to do that for the first time. There's actually, the governor, if you've listened to his budget announcement, he added $500 million for communities to be able to pre-plan the sites, identify the sites you want to see development in. No, get rid of conditional use permits, get rid of all of the obstacles that exist that prevent you from walking into a planning department and say, you told me I could build 10 units here of housing at this density, here's my application, stamp it.
Yeah, you know, I know some apartments that I own that are naturally occurring and affordable. Over on Donald Street, they're $1,700 a month and they need, you know, but if I was to go in there and remodel them and redo them, I'd have to get $2,400 a month. So I call that naturally occurring. Would that be correct?
Anything in the... A little edge.
Yep, exactly.
Anything has a HUD voucher too, for a limited time. What projects those are in Sonoma though?
I have a question for you. So...
I'm not on the panel.
I just want to clarify, well, I'll ask a question, I'll ask a question to everybody. So we have a piece of property over here and it's got four houses on four acres and people rent them out for $1,000 apiece. That's a good deal, right? However, you could either tear those four houses down and build 40 units, or we could go sprawl out into the county and build it out there. For me, I'd rather keep my density here, I'd rather take those houses down, even if I had to find, like I've done before, find housing for those people to love somewhere else, increase the density in the town and build one of these projects that Jim had on the wall here, as opposed to putting a deed restriction or trying to keep those the size they are. And what Jeff had kind of said is, you could take those houses, leave them there, keep them, remodel them and then build houses around them, but I think that's a more costly way to do it than just take a new, well-designed project, look at the cars, look at the whole piece. So just wanted to bring that up.
Good. Hey, you've all been very attentive. We're going to do a quick wrap here, I'm going to ask a link.
Well, I think it's nice to see everybody out here. This is going to take a lot of public participation to get this to work and put enough pressure on the city to make it work. But I think that, like I said, a lot of these not-for-profit developers are developing some beautiful properties and I would not be afraid to be their neighbor.
Well, I just, I'm pretty new to Sonoma County. I got here right after the fires in 2017. Actually, originally I was born in LA, so I guess I'm a Californian, but I really, it's such a beautiful, it's such a beautiful county. I mean, this county is so beautiful, there's so much here. And I think it's really, and there's great communities like Sonoma, like just going up through, up 101 all the way up to the end of Sonoma County. So I think collaboration to me is what's resonating. You know, in my, in my work, I'm the director of affordable housing at the Development Commission for the county. And what I realized when I started working is, man, there's just so many obstacles to the work that I've been asked to do. But really what I've been working on in the last year and a half is just trying to get to know folks and collaborate. And I realize there's a lot of really, really good, passionate people, but they don't necessarily talk to each other. So I think one of the roles that our agency can play is to try and bring people together who are working on this problem around different parts of the county. Because the more aligned the different communities are and the more in step they are, and we started really working on that with the federal funding and getting Sonoma and Sebastopol and Petaluma and all those guys together and really aligning the way they think about how that money can be used. To me, that's really one of the main factors that's going to move this, move this along. So I'm glad that we could be part of this kind of a process because collaboration is, in my view, that's a big, a big part of it.
Well, from family being here for over 150 years and me being here my whole entire life, I think we have a beautiful town. I've seen some great, great things be built here and I've seen some not so good. Thinking about how do we get more affordable housing, what can we do? I look at it like, there's so many costs and a lot of them are totally out of your hands that you can't even control. But we have to start somewhere. And what we need to do is come together as a community and do things for the better of us all, as opposed to the better of just any one of us. And if we do that, we'll get the momentum going and then we can work on some of these other areas and other issues as a community and get help and get stuff done.
I'm going to tear off my final words, what Jeff said. Don't be afraid of affordable housing. It's a stigma attached to it, but actually, it's really quite adds to your community. We've actually started giving tours as a Burbank Housing has of some of our projects. Actually have flyers here. We have some tours set up over the next six months because we want to break down that stigma. We want to give you the opportunity firsthand to see up close what affordable housing looks like and meet the people that live in affordable housing. And it'll break down the barriers that I think that exist in many communities towards bringing affordable housing to your community. So anybody who's interested, I have flyers here to let you know about tours coming up, so.
So this is an official city council meeting, so we do need to hold public comment. So you don't have to come forward, but I do want to say, I'll turn it to the mayor and she'll close out and do public comment.
Sure. What an incredible panel tonight. One more round of applause for them. We are so fortunate to have this depth of expertise in our town and our county, so it was really wonderful to have you all tonight. So with regard to public comment, if you would like to make public comment, I, each person would have up to three minutes. And do we have a microphone somewhere or just mine? Oh, there we go. I would say, please say your name and pass it along. Is there anybody who wants to make public comment? No? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting.